Is for a two lot subdivision on 12 Webster Lane. And with that in mind, Jerry, would you like to run us through the application?
Sure. This is a pretty simple application for a split of an existing lot. The lot's about 3.6 acres with an existing house on it. My clients purchased this house, it had been, it had been in an estate and had been empty for a number of years. It was pretty deteriorated. They have done a lot of work on it. The house is really nice right now. And they recognized that they had enough room that they could split another lot off of this. And so that's what we have, that's what we are attempting to do, is to cut the existing house and adequate area off and have a remaining lot that they can develop with a single family home. We have been through inland wetlands in Bolton and we've been through inland wetlands in Andover and have approvals for both, from both of those commissions. We've been through planning and zoning in Bolton and have approval from that commission. We have, both lots have septic systems designed and approved by the Eastern Highlands Health District. And I believe that we comply with all of the, all of the wetlands conditions and all of the planning and zoning requirements at this time. The plans that you're going to be looking at were just revised again this morning because I was under the impression that we needed to have a buildable area shown on the lots, each lot, as we did in the Grimaldi application. And so I adjusted the property line between the two lots so that we could accommodate a 150 by 200 foot square rectangle on each lot. Other than that, the plans have not changed. The only other thing to address that I, that I can think of is the solar access question, which, which is easily addressed in this case, the current subdivision plans, if we had them up, we could, we could notice that the current plans, excuse me, show for the house to be oriented at a almost north-south direction with the ridge line. When it comes time to construct a house back there, I believe that the ridge line will be running mainly parallel to the, to Webster Lane, which runs essentially east-west, and that would provide for a better orientation for solar access. What's shown right now on the subdivision plan would not be optimum, but I don't think that that orientation of the house is necessary once an application to build is submitted. I believe that the, one of the conditions of the wetlands approval was to have a gravel driveway, so that will be done. There were some questions about the erosion and sediment control plan. And my position on that is that that should be discussed between the town agent and the contractor anytime you start a project for construction, because I've been doing this for a long, long time. And every time I put together a soil erosion and sediment control plan, the contractor has a different idea of how it should be done. And usually better, because it fits his schedule. So I believe that the contractor and whatever town agents are going to be monitoring the project, they're the ones that should be determined where and when silt fence goes. And I can, I hope, answer any questions that anybody might have.
So Amanda, do we have for posting the revised plot that Jerry discussed with this buildable box on it?
Let me start sharing my screen.
This is Halcy. I just wanted to weigh in. The reason Jerry was under the impression that he needed a buildable square is because I misled him. I was using an older set of regulations, unfortunately thought were current. That one's on me. But if, if I could request of Jerry through the chair that he touch upon the discrepancy between the wetlands, the approved wetlands permit, or the plan that accompanied it, and the plan before the commission today.
Okay, I would like to see the, the most current plan.
Is it this one, Jed? Right here?
Yeah, let's try that one.
Let me know where you would like me to do it.
Yeah, if you could just scroll down a little bit so that we get, yeah, that's good, right there. That's great. Thank you. So go ahead, Jim.
I just was wondering if the engineer could touch upon how this is different from the approved wetlands plan and why?
Sure, sure. This plan, Jim, was drawn to, to accommodate the current regulations for subdivision, which require that the house, the house, the septic and the well all be outside of the 100-foot upland review area for wetlands. And so that's what this plan shows, that we can accommodate those requirements. We can have the house, the well, and the septic system all outside of the 100-foot review area. Once the subdivision is approved, then the regulations or requirements default to a zoning, which does not have such requirements, and to wetlands, which conditions of approval carry forward for whatever time until the construction is completed or the, or the permit lapses. So we're showing on this plan, the subdivision plan, that we can comply with the subdivision regulations, and so this should be approved. And I think I have represented from the beginning that this house layout, as is shown here, will most likely not be followed. And that the house will, if there is a house built here, it will be built in a configuration that's where the long, long end of the house or the ridge line of the house will be more or less parallel with Webster Lane, essentially parallel the existing house. Is, is, did I explain that okay?
Yes, I'm, I'm happy. Thank you. Can you speak for anyone else?
I'm all set with that, Jerry.
Who's that, Scott?
And I'm all set with that, as long as he's, you know, he didn't move the house closer than what he just said.
Closer to what?
To the requirements. That, you know, whatever's required, if he just said that he was going to be in those requirements, as long as he keeps that, I'm all set with it.
Well, the proposed location that Jerry would plan to build on, which goes back to his original proposal that was submitted to us at the start, would not meet the subdivision regulations of being 100 feet from the wetlands.
Didn't he just say that they were going to be 100 feet though?
I don't think that he did, and Jerry, you can speak to that, but I'll let you, you answer the question, Jerry.
Okay. The subdivision regulations are intended to show that, that lots are suitable for building. And in fact, our regulations, for whatever reason, asked if the engineers say that the lots are suitable for building, so I'll say that right now. Personally, I think that's the purview of the health department, and they already have done that. So the subdivision regulations are so that we can show development of parcels and meet their requirements for minimum size, configuration, et cetera, to show that it will not be a hazard to safety or health or whatever. That's what the regulations were written for, and that's what this plan follows. Once the subdivision, once the subdivision is approved, plans are filed, and it's a standalone, and we have two standalone lots here, then the regulations default to zoning regulations. And subdivision regulations are not applicable to any building. So, once this is approved, the intention of my clients, I believe, is to build a house that is configured much the same this one is, but will comply with the configuration that was approved by wetlands. It will be more or less parallel with the existing house at 12 Webster Lane. And portions of it will be within the 100-foot setback, but will be compliant with wetlands regular, with wetlands approval.
So does that make sense, Scott?
Yes.
Do you agree with it?
It's complying with the wetlands regulations, but are you complying with the planning and zoning regulations, Jerry?
I, I am with this plan that's shown before you, yes.
But as soon as you rotate it, is it still going to comply?
Well, it won't matter. That's my point, is once the subdivision, once the subdivision is approved, Scott, then we have two lots. And if nothing happens with these lots for 25 years, then, you know, things may change. But the fact is, they'll have two lots. They'll be able to sell the lot that has the existing house on it with 1.3 acres, and they can sell that lot, and they'll still have an empty lot that's approved for building. They could build a house that looks just like this. They could build a house that looks just like the one that was approved by inland wetlands. But what they won't be able to approve is a house that's, that doesn't comply with wetlands regulations. Because that is a condition of approval that stays with the approval. Subdivision plans, house locations, house sizes don't have to comply after subdivision's approval. And in fact, I'll tell you this, I've hardly ever seen a house on a subdivision plan that's actually built that way, once the house, once, once the lot is approved. Because most of the time, to save time effort, an engineer will put a rectangle on the piece of property that's, you know, 28 by 35 feet long or something like that. That represents a house, because you don't know what a builder's going to build. So we just put a house on there to show that it can comply with the zoning regulation, or the subdivision regulations. That's what we've done here, although I've tried to make it a little more realistic so that, so that everybody can see what's, what's going to happen.
That makes sense.
So Scott and, and Jerry, you, I, I guess I've heard the discussion, but it just, you know, I still am unable to come to grips with the thought that we approve a subdivision plan that shows where you can build a house. And then, once we approve the subdivision plan, we are no longer obligated to build the house in the area that we said we could build it in order to have an approved subdivision. And that is where I am struggling here. I, I have no reservations at all about understanding that if we, that we can approve the subdivision based on the drawing provided here. At least, that's my opinion at this point, but I cannot figure out how we, we think that then we could take a, and put a house someplace else that wasn't giving us the authorization by our regulations to subdivide it in the first place.
Jed, I think that's a question that you'd have to, that you'd have to address within your regulations. I'm just going by what the regulations say and how they work.
I understand, and you know, got it, understand. So that, that's where we are on that.
You put the buildable square on there, you can put the house in there in the future, anywhere in the buildable square, you're saying?
Actually, Scott, as far as the regulations go, you don't have to, once the, once the lots are approved, you don't have to use the buildable square to put your house in. You just have to have a buildable square on the property. This comes back to, you know, the buildable square thing came up in the 80s, Scott, and, and you know, that's when I started, that's when I started in this business, in the mid 80s, when subdivisions were going up everywhere and towns were trying to find ways to slow down development. And this was one of the tools they used. I don't think Andover's in that position anymore. First of all, obviously, we're not in that position, because the buildable square requirement was expunged from our regulations in 2018, I believe, 2019, whatever. Because it's, it's onerous. We shouldn't be trying to slow down development today, because heaven knows, we need a few more people in Andover.
Okay, so I'm going to leave that as an open question that, that if need be, I can get a legal interpretation on at some point here. I did talk to Mark Brants about why, you know, about our 100-foot regulation. And his perspective on that was that that was to allow us to have a little bit more control over subdividing a piece of property that made it easier to put those controls in place than, than for the inland wetlands agency to determine why a design would be detrimental. And so, you know, now I find myself wrestling with the, the issue of we as a planning and zoning commission are authorized to create the regulations. But once those regulations are created, we as a planning and zoning commission are expected to follow those regulations. But the, the the house location, the well and the septic are in compliance with our subdivision regulations as they exist today.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else you would like to add on, on your proposal, Jerry, before I go on to Jim?
No, just that, again, we, I believe we comply with the regulations, and I'd really love to get this thing approved so that we don't hold up my, my clients any longer on this.
In, in response to that question, I, I do feel that the planning and zoning commission, once again, is well within all the authorized time constraints that we have placed upon us, not not including the, the 90-day extra that the governor, through his executive order, has provided. So I, I don't feel that we are slowing the process up any.
I didn't mean to imply that you were, Jed. It's, it's morally been on, been on me and all the little, you know, oddities and peculiar, peculiarities of this particular application.
Understand, and we're wrestling with that too. Jim, could you give us an update on the completion and thoroughness of the application itself?
I have reviewed the application, and I sat through the wetlands hearing and, or I'm sorry, the wetlands meetings. And I had a tough time following the whole concept with the subdivisions, but I, with the subdivision, being able to, to build with, in compliance with zoning regulations, but no, this subdivision regs are no longer applicable after such time as it's approved. I understand that. I mean, if somebody builds, somebody has a 20-acre lot, house is shown over on one side and they want to build on the other, it happens. It's the same sort of thing. As far as the, the plan, you know, I have spoken to Jerry a number of times over the months. There is one waiver request, I believe, in the, in the file, I believe it was posted on the website pertaining to the topography offsite. As far as, I had made a comment to Jerry regarding the field erosion and sedimentation control, and I, I understand, I have no problem with really defining the ENS controls in the field, provided that whoever handles that matter, whether it be zoning agent, wetlands agent, has the ability to do it based on, on approval. And that can be addressed as a condition, everything. Jerry, did, did seem to miss the, the chart that, that's on the plan has some discrepancies as far as dimensional requirements, so.
I think I addressed those when I did the buildable square, Jim.
Okay. You know, I honestly didn't have a chance to review that. Okay. I didn't review that after the submitted. But the setbacks that are shown on the, on the map, on the plan was, were accurate. So with that, I want to point out that, you know, there were a number of this was referred to the towns of Bolton, towns of Hebron, and the capital, towns of the government, and I have no response from any of those bodies. There's not, nothing more to add.
Oh, I, I would also like to point out that I, just for the record, I did post a sign on the property indicating that there was a public hearing coming out, coming up in Andover tonight with a spelling out the town website, and we also mailed letters with a copy of the River East notice to each of the abutters within 100, each of the parcels within 100 feet.
Amanda, can you go back to the, the site drawing that you had put up just a minute ago, please?
Yes.
Now, I think, Jim, weren't you referring to the fact that we were expecting to see a a block for the dimensions on each of the lots, not just the, the one?
Correct. I mean, it could certainly happen within the same block.
Hey Amanda, if you could scroll over that little block that's to the right of, of the property here. Yep, you have to scroll to the right some more, the block.
He's going, Amanda.
Okay, there you go.
I'm of the opinion that both lots should be, should be charted out here. It appeared to comply as far as the setbacks on the, on the house, on the house lot, meaning that, that lot with the existing home. There's not a compliance issue, it's just a matter of, of the chart. And I just want to point out what applied was, we did not apply the, the lot with requirement from Andover, because part of the lot is in Bolton. But I'd argue it's very yard, lot size are governed by Andover regs.
Okay, but on the, so the specifications on lot area for minimum side yard, we have listed 10 feet, I think.
Right.
Isn't the
25.
number there, 25?
I can make those corrections, obviously.
We can make that a condition, right?
Yes.
Okay, Jim, did you have anything else you wanted to add on the application itself?
No, I do not.
We need a motion for the waiver on
That's kind, that would be prior to voting on the, during the regular meeting.
Okay.
Amanda, could you close this drawing out and put up the topography map, which is the one just above us?
This one?
Yes, please. Okay, I just wanted everybody to have a chance to see this one as well. And I know, is, as I was going through, Jerry, and you may have corrected them on your drawing today, there were a couple of things on the legend that, that I thought were inconsistent with your drawing. Can say, scroll down, Amanda. I see, I see the regulated area and the setback lines on the legend are the same annotation. And the regulated area is
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so Jim, if you are done, I will open the conversation to commission members. Does anybody have any questions for either Jim or Jerry? And so, hearing none, I do have one question, Jim. I know Jerry said he had the septic approval. I did not see that in our file online before we came on today. Do you have that copy and it just didn't get posted, or, or what happened there?
I believe I made it posted just prior to the meeting.
It's right here. I will open it up.
You know, if I just made a comment, this is what the, our regulations read one thing, you know, they're asking for a letter. This is what Highlands do. That's, this is what they provide. That's all we're going to get.
Okay, but it looks like they've, they've had a chance to look at what the wetlands commission approved, not necessarily what, what our subdivision plan would approve. And so that's another discontinuity that I struggle with on having one plan not reflect the other necessarily.
Jed, just for the record, I talked to Thad King, the acting sanitarian for this project, about what difference it would make if I project, about what difference it would make if I changed the reserve area and the primary septic area as, as is shown on the most recent subdivision plan. And Thad said, as long as you're within 25 feet of the test pits that we originally dug, he is confident that the soils will not have changed, and he would approve that. He just said it just goes without saying that anything within 25 feet of the test pits is approved. That's what I got from Thad.
Okay, and so for the benefit of our commission, can you run us through why you chose not to put the septic system outside the 100-foot regulated area?
Yeah, the septic system as originally designed is, is east of the driveway, in the area of the test pits, and the soils there are, have more of a slope to them, which, which is more conducive to getting the effluent out of the septic system into the ground. Your system doesn't have to be as long as spread out with a steeper area. The soils are better there, and it fits the lot configuration better there. So that's why I designed it to be there.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Any other questions from any of the commission members on the application? Okay, Amanda, if you can close this out and go back to the development map, please.
Yes. You mean this one?
Yes, please. And Jerry, I was looking at the sequence of construction, and I didn't see anything about when the driveway would be installed.
I would suggest that that would be one of the first things, Jed, because you've got to get back there. But are you looking for a date, a time of year, or just that that's going to be the first thing in?
Well, I know our, our regulations talk a little bit about timing. I understand that's difficult when you haven't gotten approved plan yet. But I, I do know that on other applications, we've had issues with the driveways. And, and so we, as a commission, said we needed to pay a little more attention to the sequence of construction. And I see we don't have the driveway in here, which was a problem with another application recently. So I just thought it would be appropriate to have that added to our sequence, wherever that, whether that's before or after the installation of the, the silt fence. I think our regulations probably require that after the installation.
Oh, the silt fence has got to be, the silt fence would go in first, Jed, there's no doubt about that. We'll put the silt fence in before, before construction of the driveway and a, and a construction entrance pad at Webster Lane.
Okay, so you, so you will add that to the sequence of construction?
I can certainly do that, yes.
And I was also expecting to see on this drawing, and didn't, but I could not find in our regulations, so maybe one of our fellow commission members would help me out. I was expecting to see where we would stockpile the topsoil, that step three says strip and stockpile topsoil.
To be honest with you, that's another, that's another issue that goes along with what I've said about working with contractors in the past. You know, I would, I would typically think it would go over where the, where on this back lot where it says buildable square over near the well. But so often I get this wrong that I just figure I'll just leave it off and let the contractor and the, whoever the town agent is discuss that, because the contractor is going to put it someplace else. I don't think I've gotten it right yet.
So Scott, I know you brought this up on a previous application. Are, are you aware of something I'm missing in our subdivision regs that require that, or was that just a common practice that we had seen on drawings?
It's just a common practice. This lot is very flat, though.
Understand and, and agree.
Sometimes you'd like to see it if there's Wetlands close by, but where Gary's talking about, you know, I can see where he's gonna put it, he's gonna put it up behind the house to the west, and it's flat up there, so.
And Jim, what would be, what would be the requirement to have the fire marshal inspect the driveway? When, when does that happen? Is that part of this application?
Well, it's, it's a requirement in the subdivision regs that after X number of feet, I believe it's 200 feet, there'd be a turnaround. Doesn't, I don't believe it specifically calls for the fire marshal approval. It has been done as a matter of course, in, at least in my experience. I mean, that could certainly, I mean, should the mission look favorably on the application, that could certainly be covered up by way of a condition. I, by cover, I mean, having the fire marshal review the plan, to approve the plan.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Is, is Kevin still on the line?
Yeah, I'm still on the line, Jed.
Kevin, at this point, would you, do you have any questions, or do you have any comments concerning this application?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that I'm struggling to understand is how you can present a plan to a commission to build a house, and then once it gets approved, the contractor can go through and put the house wherever they wanted to in the first place. That would be like going before a town, saying, this is where I'm going to build a road. And then once they approve it, you can just go build the road wherever you were planning to build it anyhow. Can, so I read through section six for review and approval. Can someone just point out where it says that once a plan is approved, the contractor applicant can go and put the house wherever they want to?
Those words are certainly not in section six or any other place in our subdivision regulations.
What it falls back on is subdivision approval is not a site plan approval. A Wetlands approval is in fact a site plan approval. I mean, you build specific to that approved plan. Subdivision is not. It's simply, you're proving that you, you show where you can put a house.
Okay, so once, so once, if, if this were to be approved, then whether it's Jerry's client or whoever else is building, they will have to come before planning and zoning again with a final site plan of showing exactly where they're going to get to put a house?
At that point, it would, you would fall upon the zoning regs. Any development would have to be compliant with the zoning regulations. And that does not require a commission approval. If you look at, I mean, I'm sure you have, because I know you've spent a lot of time on this. I appreciate that. I mean, a lot of, in the subdivision regs is mirrored in the, in the zoning regulations, but there are some differences. I think there's a number of reasons for that. One of them is, I mean, you're simply showing that, that a lot can support development, whereas with subdivision application, whereas zoning regulation, and then you have setbacks and you have rate requirements and such. Which all fall under the subdivision regulations as well. They're just, they're just a little less, little, they allow some things.
Okay.
I can appreciate, it is a hard concept to grasp, but I, I struggled with it.
Okay. If we're going by the subdivision regulations for initial approval, there was a calculation example done out in there to prove whether a lot being subdivided could sustain two houses or not. And when I did the calculation, if you consider both lots, it's capable of supporting 1.79 lots. And if you just consider lot two, it's capable of supporting 0.96 lots. So you're under two and you're under one when you factor in driveway area and wetlands area.
In which section was that example calculation in, Kevin?
Hold on, let me bring it up for you here. Sorry, it's a really long document. It's hard to find it. Oh, actually, sorry, it was in the zoning regulations. It's 5.5.7.4, or sorry, 5.5.7.5.
Okay, I, I will take it on faith at this point, Kevin, that your math might be correct. I, I would tell you that I looked at that calculation and I got a little confused. So I'll have to go back and, and take another look at that one, because that, that was not a trivial calculation to go through. And so I'm not prepared to discuss that at this point. Are you, Jim?
No, I am not. I apologize.
Okay, so that is the reason that we have the public hearing, is to get input from the public on that.
That's on the, that's on the zoning regulations, not the subdivision regulations?
Right.
Correct.
Can we pull that up so we can look at that?
Amanda, are you able to do that?
Yes, working on it now.
Okay.
Okay, so you said the zoning regs?
Right.
What was this, section six?
On page 70.
It's on page 70.
Sixty-nine.
It's different because you're opening on a web browser, but it's 5.5.7.5.
All right, I can address that. That applies to open space subdivisions.
Which this is not.
And, you know, I have to be honest, the, the way the regulations, just the way they're numerically laid out, makes them hard to read. I mean, five point
What's ARD?
Princeton 5.571 is a component of 5.57, as are everything 5.5 through 7.
Oh, I understand. Sorry, it wasn't clear.
No, I can appreciate. It's, it's the layout of the, the regulations.
But I do agree with Jim that, that this is applicable to the open space cluster development rather than conventional subdivision.
ARD.
I thought, I thought you had it on that one.
The other thing I want to point out is that the test pits were done in August at the driest time of the year, as opposed to February through May, when they're regulated. So we saw the site throughout the entire spring into, into early summer. And in the spring, the, where the proposed septic is planned to go, there were bodies of standing water for weeks on end. So I'm not confident, I mean, I'm not a soil scientist, but seeing as how the zoning, the regs call for test pits to be done February through May, obviously when the ground is at full saturation, I don't understand how they can approve August test pits when it's at the driest time of the year. For instance, right now, like if you go over to Gay City, even all the ponds that are completely filled with water have totally dissipated.
Well, I, I can tell you how you do that. You do that by looking at the soil conditions when you open the test pit, and you look for what's called mottling, which is oxidation of the layers, which is the oxidation does, makes a staining of the soil layer, and that is an indication of the high watermark. The presence of water that's been there for 30 days or more at a time leaves some mottling. And that's what we use for the high watermark. It's a very conservative way to go. But you'll see in the test pit logs there that we have mottling at about 24 inches. And that's, that mottling is the staining of the soils by high groundwater. If you look in the technical standards of the Department of Public Health for septic system onsite septic system design, they, they like tests during the spring when the groundwater is typically highest, but they allow for testing throughout the year. And you use the, the high mottling instead of groundwater elevations to designate that restrictive area.
Right, but that's not what Andover has in their regulations.
Okay, I understand your comment, Kevin. Do you have any other feedback for us at this point?
I was just hoping someone could explain how the buffer areas work and how land clearing works. Like, is the applicant allowed to clear existing tree lines once this has been approved? I just looking more for input and explanation.
Is there clearing limits on the prints, Jim?
No.
Because it's already cleared. And I think, and I think it's cleared up to the boundary line almost, isn't it?
It is pretty clear, let me, let me throw this in there. It is pretty clear, I, I'm sure that the, the current applicants don't intend to take any more trees down than is absolutely necessary. And I have shown on the, coincidental with where we propose silt fence, I have an arrow that says proposed limits of disturbance. I, I don't think that the I, I don't think that the applicant's gonna clear any trees for this house.
Thank you.
I mean, as, as I said, this went through the Wetlands Commission and it would have come up at that time had it been an issue. Yeah, it doesn't appear that there's.
Aren't the boundary lines close to the tree line? Gary?
Not to the east.
Amanda, can you go back and, and call up that bottom, the subdivision drawing again, so we can take a look at that?
Amanda, use a development plan, please.
You got it.
That's the subdivision plan.
It's loading.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, no worries, let me, I'm trying. Okay. Here we go.
You're doing great, Amanda, that's why I didn't want it, want to do that, and I wanted you here.
Anywhere I should zoom in?
I think that's good, right where you are.
Well, I would say that they can't be clearing in the wetlands anyways and tree lines closing in on the wetlands anyway, right there.
Where on this, this map, Jerry, is the area of disturbance you were talking about?
Uh, it's essentially spelled out by the silt fence. If you look right on the on the eastern lot that we're talking about, right above where it says buildable square, it also says approximate limits of disturbance.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Right.
Anything else, Kevin?
So, does that mean that they can clear the trees to the south, right up to the line if they want to? We're having a really hard time with the fact that basically another house is going to be built directly in our backyard. And, and like even in the summer, you can see it clear as day, it's a beautiful lot having it one continuous piece of land. But at the end of the day, two houses are being sandwiched on one, the property that barely meets most of the regulations.
I understand, and so Kevin, I guess with, with you having just made that, that comment, my question for you is would you prefer to see the house in the location that it's shown here? Or in the parallel to Webster Lane location that gets it a little bit further away from your property line?
To be honest, that's a tough question, neither one is ideal. One of them, because I, I mean ideally the way you lay out a house, living area, bathroom, kitchen would be along the back wall of the house. I don't think people usually put a kitchen or a bathroom at the very end of the house opposite of the garage. But they could do it in this case, I guess. But then you wind up looking, you know, basically directly at each other, especially in the fall, winter and spring. I know the other one is 75 feet off the boundary instead of 55 feet. I, I don't think either one is desirable, I know in this newly proposed plan, the well is even closer to the well that's on our property right now.
Understand, and, and that's one of the, the things I was struggling with the most here is if we comply strictly to the regulations, which the property owner has a right to do, I think he ends up with something that might be less desirable in your perspective than if he builds it in the situation where we've discussed, that is not exactly in compliance with the regulations. And so I'm trying to sort my way through all of those issues, just like I agree with your comment on how can it be that he can build someplace other than in the location that he showed in the subdivision plan. But I got the input from you that I needed, Kevin, not an easy choice.
Thanks.
With that in mind, I think we've gone through everybody's had a chance to ask Jerry and Jim questions. I'll go one more time if anybody else has anything else they would like to discuss or ask before we would close the public hearing.
Is, is it possible to have a note somewhere that says that we don't put the oak pile to the east of the proposed home? Keep it away from the wetlands as far as possible?
Um. My only caveat is yes, keep it away from the wetlands as far as possible, I want to make sure we're not running afoul of the wetlands ruling. Quite honestly, that probably should have been discussed at the Wetlands Commission and wasn't.
But just a note somewhere or a condition?
Sure, I mean, there, there can certainly be a, there can certainly be a condition. Yes.
Just put it to the west of the house.
So this will go before wetlands again then, right? Because we're approving a different plan, or possibly approving a different plan than what Wetlands approved?
I don't think that's necessarily true, Kevin, because the plan that we are discussing here is more restrictive than the plan that Wetlands approved.
Okay, I just thought, I just thought I remember Amanda saying that if it changed, it would have to come back. Or sorry, Megan.
Her comment is I went back and reviewed the Wetlands discussions today was that if we change the location of the bump out, which there was there was some discussion at the meeting in, about changing that to bump out to the west instead of the east so that it would be further away from the wetlands. And then the discussion there at that point was that that would have to come back before Wetlands. I'm not sure I understand that either, because that made it more restrictive and better. But, but I do recall that conversation there.
So if it's to the west, does the septic tank still go there?
I'll let, I'll let Jerry answer that question. Jerry?
The plans, the, the plans that we're looking at are generic, and so was the one of, one before the Wetlands Commission was probably closer to what will happen. I don't know exactly where the driveway is going to go, and I don't know exactly where the septic tank's going to go. What's going to happen is if and when this is approved, and the client wants to build a house, they'll give us some plans of the house, and then they'll lay out a site plan, and the site plan's going to have to, have to be compliant with the Wetlands approval. Specifically where stuff grows, I couldn't tell you.
You know, as far as, as whether a wetlands and would have to go back before the Wetlands Commission, as, that, when I would Wetlands agent would probably defer to the commission if he had any question. Probably over the course of time, he will have a better sense as to what, what they want to see and what they don't, but for the present time, my guess is he would start signing off. There'd be a change.
My response to you, Kevin, would be that I would like this commission to approve a subdivision, it's in accordance with our subdivision regulations. And then I will continue to investigate the legalities of any deviation from that going forward. My goal at this point is to, to act based on our subdivision regulations as, as they're laid out in, in effect today.
Understood.
Any other questions before, for Jim or Jerry, before we close the public hearing? Hearing none. I guess Linda, my expert, is not here tonight, I can't recall whether or not we need a motion to close the public hearing, or that's Say again?
Yes, you need a motion.
Okay, thank you. With that, does anybody wish to make a motion regarding closing the public hearing?
I'll make the motion, close the public hearing.
Thank you, Ann, is there a second?
I'll second, this is Leanne.
Thank you, Leanne. Any discussion? Shouldn't be, and hearing none. A call for a vote, and we'll start with Ian.
Aye.
Scott? Susan? Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that concludes the public hearing. And at this point, we will move on into our regular meeting. Thank you all for your participation, thank you, Kevin. So Amanda, if you can go close out the, the subdivision drawing that you're, you're showing there. Thank you. And I have 8:06, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. So for a roll call, I see Ann, Scott, Burson, Susan, England. And I hear Leanne.
Right.
So I will seat Susan as a regular member for our vacancy. And that completes item two on the agenda. The third issue is addition or changes to the agenda. And I would like to move item 6A, the 12 Webster Lane application, up above the old business, so that we can discuss that. And then I would like to make item, old business, item 5B, the annual report. And then make the, the draft late regulations in the bylaws come after that. Anybody else have any proposed changes to the agenda or additions? Amanda, do we need to vote on the changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like a, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Is there a second? Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Leanne. Any further discussion? Hearing none, a call for a vote. Ann?
Aye.
Scott? Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That completes item three, moving on to item four, public speak. Does anybody from the public? And I don't see Kevin with us any longer. So I guess there's no public speak.
I'm still here, but we covered it.
Oh, okay, thank you, and, and then moving on to I guess it's going to be item 5A, new business, 12 Webster Lane application. So do any of the commission members have would like, would any of you like to make a motion, one way or the other, with respect to the application that we had the public hearing on?
Would we have to start by doing the waiver request?
That would be a good start, yes. I don't know if, if the waiver request in the motion for what to do with the subdivision have to be, well, let's, let's so, as you're saying, Susan, I'd like to get a motion with respect to the waiver request that we had presented to us. And that was
How does that read?
I think the, the would be, I would like to approve the request for a waiver of topographic requirement within 200 feet beyond the property line.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Susan, thank you, Scott. Any discussion on the, the proposal for the waiver? Hearing none, a call for a vote, Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes 5:00. Okay, now moving on to the, the application before us for the subdivision on 12 Webster Lane. And I think our choices are, we can, we can approve it, we can approve it with conditions, where we can defer discussion until the following meeting. If there was a need to do that.
I'll vote to, or I'll move to approve the application Karma for 12 Webster Lane. the application karma for 12 Webster Lane. Lot subdivision.
I'll second that.
Okay, that was Scott making the motion. Was that you, Anne, for a second?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, thank you, Anne. Any discussion?
Well, it has to have a lot of conditions, right, Jim? You have them all written down?
I do. Yeah, you, do you have that?
I have a lot of them written down. Stockpile to the west of the house. Ag driveway sequence to the construction sequence. Regulated area on a print.
I did have a draft motion.
You did?
I did, yes. Jed, do you happen to have it? A draft motion?
I do happen to have it. I don't have it available to post.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I apologize. I don't have it readily available. Oh, wait a minute, I should be able to... And she'll post it for me.
Yeah, did you have these, some of these written down?
I should just be permitted, Scott.
I did, and Amanda, am I, I think I can call it up here. I took a sneak peek. If you allow me to screen share, maybe I can call that up.
Okay, just made you a co-host. You should be able to share now.
Okay, that should be it. Does everybody see the proposed motion?
Yes, thank you, Jed.
Jim, can you see that?
Yeah, but I think I will be momentarily. I can see it, yes.
Okay.
So you add these other conditions to that? Jed?
So we, yeah, we would need to add the correction of the side yard from 10 feet to 25 feet. The legend where the regulated area needs to be shown, not like a setback line.
Right, change that.
Sequence of construction to include the driveway. And the stockpile. Not east of the, stockpile to the west of the home.
Right.
Those were the only other conditions that I recall as we were going through the discussion tonight.
And you said to can add both lots to the sidebar on the print?
Yes, yep.
At back lines? Okay, it's all of them I have.
Number five may become a point. I knew that there was an issue with the discrepancy between the two plans, the Wetlands and the planning, and I have number five on there. And that's an issue. It did address the open space payment, aiming a little of open space. And for benefit of anybody who might not know how that works is, an appraisal is done of the property at the applicant's expense. And the applicant pays up 10% of that value. In particular case, would be pro rated between Bolton and Andover because the simple fact that it's in two towns, so it would be just a simple arithmetic function.
Yeah, I did see the appraisal on the website in the form.
Yeah, I've addressed monumentation in a final asp. And just some general, what Jerry suggested that we sort of do field adjustments out there. And I don't recall whether the erosion and center control plan allows for that, whether it should be added, just a simple. I mean, there were several changes to that. I think it should be part of the approval, part of the condition.
So do you have, I'm struggling with the suggested wording there, and it goes back to, you know, I struggle with, we have a plan, but the plan doesn't need to be followed.
So I'm saying that the plan be amended to include notation to the effect that, you know, the field adjustments per town staff.
For who?
Town staff.
Yeah, okay, so you would be doing those adjustments?
Yes.
Okay. I I think that sounds like a reasonable condition to put in there as well. And then item five, you have a question mark on there?
Yeah, that I spoke of, that deals with the deviation between Wetlands Plan and planning and zoning commission subdivision plan.
And quite honestly, from the viewpoint of the abutter, I struggle with trying to understand, I guess my sense is that if I were living next to the property, I'd prefer to see the house that Jerry intended to build as opposed to the one that our subdivision regulations allow. Although I agree with the abutter that, that, you know, none of them are ideal, but but the property owner does have a right to subdivide and it would go there. So I guess my conclusion is, and this is, this is my thought, to share it to you guys, you guys all, I got one vote, you guys all have one vote too. What's important to me is that we approve a subdivision that's in accordance with our subdivision regs. I am still learning how the system works. And if the, the way the system worked resulted in a house being placed where Jerry thinks it's best suited, I I'm willing to take that chance as a learning opportunity to find out how to be smarter in the future. If I'm not so willing to have it deviate from what we're saying, and I would then know how to stop it. But in this particular case, I do think that what Jerry is recommending that he'd like to do as opposed to what we require makes, makes a lot of sense. So that's where I'm at, and if the house gets built where he wanted it to, and our subdivision planning didn't allow us to prevent that, we'd be smarter and know how to do it better going forward. But I do think that, that the drawing that he presented to us tonight is in compliance with our regulations. I guess the only thing that, you know, is I continue to get smarter on, well, I don't I don't know where in this discussion, so I probably said too much about what I think at this point, we need to get the motion approved, and then we can have further discussion. But that's where we are with, with conditions on there. So I think we've got a motion to approve with conditions. We've got a second. I guess we are ready for discussion. And I can't remember what I was going to say at this point. So there you go. You're safe from that. Any other discussion on the application?
I just have a question. This is an approval for a lot to be built on, right? And the house plans are not involved in this, so the house plan might be slightly different than what that's where on the map is. Is that correct?
Yes.
So they might, it might be a slight difference, and I think it makes sense to turn it so that it faces the solar thing better. I know when we built our house, the architect originally designed the house the opposite way. And I said, hey, you know, it would be better if we had the driveway over on the left instead of on the right because of the sun and the melting of the snow. We weren't really thinking about solar at that time, but we didn't have to go and get approvals. It was just, we had the lot and already the subdivision had been approved, and then we just put what we wanted on the lot. We didn't have to get the approval, and I think it worked just fine. I can't see getting too specific with this one. As far as, you know, like the position of the house, it's on there. It fits.
I think the difference, Anne, is that your house probably didn't encroach on the upland review area of Wetlands.
Yeah, maybe not.
For this one, the issue is there is a very small area that's outside the upland review area in which you can build the house.
What fit, just barely fit.
Yep, and so one of the options is to say, nope, it's either in that area or nothing. But that's in a step after, you know, what we are approving is for it to be built in that area that's outside the upland review area.
Yeah, Alasy, presumably, and I mean, the house was approved, it was approved administratively by the zoning agent. Yeah, based on compliance with zoning regs. You wouldn't have seen it. It's just part of the building permit process.
Well, it's fairly new that we have the solar requirement in there to take that into consideration. And that is at odds with, with our requirement, so, and I guess that's why we have a commission to make those decisions when it's they're somewhat conflicted. Going back, the thing that I did, you know, struggle with reading through the regulations, and Kevin pointed it out rightly so, is that our, our regulations do require the test bits to be tested during February through April timeframe, I think. In the past, I had considered a certification from the Eastern Highlands Health District to, to say they, you know, I deferred to their call on whether, you know, they're out there supervising the test bits. They must be good. As Kevin pointed out, our regulations show that it's different. That might be something that we need to change going forward. I had always thought that it did make sense to go out and do the test bits, not in the middle of a drought, in the middle of August, if that's when they were done. And I did not know when those test bits were done. I assume Kevin's got the correct date of August on there.
But they, they've always done it by modeling.
Okay, yep, and, and, but we are working hard to try and make sure that we're in compliance with our regulations.
Right, yeah. And so maybe we have to write that down and check in with.
Yeah, perhaps we should have someone from Highland come and give us like 10 minutes and perhaps suggest language we could use to be compliant with what we're doing.
Right.
Yep. Not a bad idea, and yes, I'd be interested in hearing what they have to say on that so we can make our regulations better. There's probably a couple of things in there, and, but there's, there's good reasons why the regulations don't get updated more frequently. And we're going to see some of that with the workload we've got coming up here. Anyhow, there's, any other discussion on the motion? So I guess I'm thinking that we should remove item five from the list that Jim has prepared there. We've, we've discussed that. So we've got items one, two, three, four that Jim has on there. And a couple of extra modifications to the plan could be included in your item one on that, Jim. The, the side yard change, the sequence of construction, the stockpile location in both lots included in the sidebar.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a comment. Interestingly, I noticed on Jerry's plan, there's a little chart for the ENS, which I've never noticed before, and there's dates that you plug in. I mean, it's assuming the intent that this, these dates be plugged in at the time of, of construction. That's as prior to. Is Jerry still on? No. I just wanted to point that out, that it wasn't, and it's on the plan, it just isn't filled in.
I'm available, Jim.
I was just commenting on the, on the box that's on the plan in the ENS allows you to plug in dates.
Right, and that's the stuff that I think needs to be addressed by the contractor and the town agent just before start of construction so that everybody's on the same page.
I was just pointing out that it's there to be filled in.
Okay, good, good.
But it's not going to be filled in on the plan because it's going to happen until after the file.
Right.
It's kind of, it was a little mystery to me.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I call for a vote. Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne? Did we lose Leanne?
It looks like she's muted.
Okay, right. Leanne?
Yes, I mean, aye.
And I vote aye as well. The, the motion passes 5:00. Okay.
Thanks for the time.
Yep, you're welcome, Jerry, and you're welcome to stick around if you want. But I suppose you probably got better things to do out there in California.
It's still light out, Jed.
Yep, still light out. Okay, we're going to move, we're going to move on to old business, item five. We're gonna move on to old business, item five A, discussion on the update, the clock property. Scott, can you tell us where we are on that?
Jim Celio, the, the real estate agent, said that the clocks are not interested in any kind of donations or gifting of the parcel at this time, in whole or partially.
Okay, so is there a way ahead or are we just going to, you know, drop that particular issue?
Okay, we're, we're gonna have to drop it now because Planning and Zoning Commission okayed a hundred and the Conservation Commission said half of the two thirteen, right?
Half of the one, one sixty.
I think they said half of what we have in the open space.
Yeah. Right. Not to, not to exceed that half.
Right.
So, okay, well, we'll let the property sit on the market, see if the price comes down.
Right.
Okay, very good. So anything else on the clock property? Any questions anybody has there? Okay, we'll move on to five B, the annual report. Oh. Look at that. Okay, so the annual report, I got some good feedback from Susan on this and I think I incorporated most of the changes that she had. She did have, Susan, you had a couple of suggestions for changes of the heading and I left those as originally put in the document because that was the format that was specified by the town. So I was in some cases trying to round, round pegs into square holes, but I did label those in that document.
Okay, I have a concern about mission statement because I usually think of mission statement as being the purpose of planning and zoning is to whatever. But I think that's fine.
Yep. And, and I understand and I started off with, like, the versions that I compared, you know, I looked at how Wetlands did theirs and, and they took that verbiage that, you know, on our website saying what it does. And, and that should probably be a mission statement. We're probably not there yet, but I didn't want to redevelop a mission statement this time around. That might be something that if we get the luxury of working going forward, we'll make it a little more succinct, which is, I think, what you're used to seeing on a mission statement.
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy with, the reason I changed it also is if something were to happen and we no longer had the same lawyer, that, which was in the original mission statements, that's why I tried to make it shorter and I think better off now. And I think it would be worthwhile trying to make a more concise mission statement in the future.
I did, I did like that verbiage that we have on the website though, because it spells it out very clearly. We, we are the authority for making regulations, but once we make them, we have to follow them. And I thought that was, those words did not.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, my internet is bad tonight. I just, this is what you said.
Yeah, I just, I liked the, the words on the introduction from the website that say we do have the authority to make regulations.
Exactly.
But once we make them, we have to follow them. And I know we're trying hard to do that as we go through these applications and I appreciate everybody's patience there. The, looking over the year, we, we talked about the significant challenges due to personnel turnover, both on the commission and with, with John Valenti's retirement and Jim coming in. Is, I was starting to read through this in, you know, right at, I said, losing all that talent was, was a real hardship for us. And, and then, you know, when I look at the, the experience that Susan brings, that Leanne has and Scott has, okay, there's, maybe I don't have that institutional knowledge yet, but there's an awful lot of good knowledge on the commission and I came away feeling pretty good about the team that we got there. And Ann and I will work hard to get up to speed with the rest of you. So it does take us a little bit to get back up to speed, me especially, on, on getting through the applications and that, but I think we're, we're gaining momentum and, and going forward there. That's gonna be good. One of the things was the exciting improvement in projects. I, I didn't think that we had an awful lot. We do have that community grant that we had worked through and that was in this fiscal year. I know that's not come to conclusion yet, but, but that's probably the biggest deal that we had going with us. We did have a couple of meetings where, you know, we were looking at the Andover Elementary School for the senior center, community center. That didn't play out. I thought it was important that we do, won't comment on whether or not that was good or bad, that it didn't go that way, but then we had a couple of special permit applications and we did some good training. And, and so we did a couple of things, not, certainly not up to what Eric and John had done going up to that point. For the future goals, I looked, you know, it would be nice to get a couple of new members to get our, our vacancies filled. We, we've talked about updating the planning and zoning bylaws and, and I know we're not gonna get time to go through those tonight. Leanne gave me some good feedback on that and I quite honestly just hadn't had time to wrestle with the issues that Leanne pointed out to me. I did verify that the charter that's on the website is the current version and, and so a lot of the comments that I had with Mark Brants, you know, I answered by saying, we're, we're doing what the charter says. And that, that's the way it went. So we'll, we'll get the bylaws done this year. I still think there's some improvement we can make on figuring out how to make the application process more user friendly for all concerned. It seems like it's, it's difficult for me anyhow. And then I rounded out that with our, our work on regulations protect the water quality. And I do wanna go through that with everybody here tonight, even though it's getting a little late. I've got some deadlines coming up in the near future with respect to that project and, and I need to get your feedback as we're working that direction. And then the last section was the member names and positions and, and that's just who we are. So with that, that's what I propose for our annual report that I will submit to the town tomorrow unless anybody has any significant concerns about the report at this point in time.
Fabulous job, Jed.
Thank you, Jed.
Okay, well, I don't know that it's fabulous, but, but it's done and it's got all the things that you asked for, Amanda. And okay, very good. You'll have that tomorrow, Amanda, and that will be that.
Good job, Jed.
Okay, so the next, next thing on the agenda is the lake regulations. And so Jim and I and John Valenti have recently started looking at, at how to get these to the finish lines. As I had mentioned to the commission some time ago, at the June Alma Alpoa meeting, you know, when they were talking about things, well, it was from their minutes from the previous year, was that the zone, the lake regs had been approved. I said, no, they hadn't. And they asked me to, to give them a, an update on the lake regs at the October meeting, which is coming up on October fourteenth. So I said, well, I better get my story straight and I wanted to share it with, with all of you folks. And as we get to the end, you'll find out the way ahead on the interim is on October fifth, I will be briefing the inland wetlands commission on this presentation. Then on October seventh, we'll be briefing the Alma Board of Directors and the president of Alpoa on this to take it to a meeting on October fourteenth for the general Alpoa Alma membership in the community. So that's why I needed to get this off and running and, and going from there. The lake regulation goals, you know, I put to improve the, the quality of water in Andover Lake. That, that is true. And Alma and Alpoa are the beneficiaries of that. I, I think the, the real reason that the town is concerned on this is if the, the, the quality of the water in Andover Lake would be a risk to us that deep could come in at some point and say, we need to put sewers throughout the town, which is a huge financial undertaking that at this point in time, we're not really excited about doing that. And so if we can improve the quality of the water in the lake, there's one of the significant risk factors to that, that we get better than Alma and Alpoa, you are certainly in favor of that. How do we get contaminants in the lake? We've got both stormwater runoff on the land and from the septic systems. So those are the two primary means that we have contamination going in the lake. And so the lake regulations divide the lake into districts, into zones depending upon how close property is to the lake, making the regulations more effective where the regulation would have greater impact on improving water quality, which is closer to the lake itself. So this is out of our, I think I took this map out of our plan of conservation and development. And it shows in blue over here, this is the lake district surrounding Andover Lake. And it just, you know, the, the people at the last Alpoa meeting didn't know where the lake district was, didn't know where the watershed was and all that stuff. So I wanted to start out showing the town of Andover in our lake district. Within the last week, Jim was able to resurrect, find, obtain, I don't know how he got it, but we got what we were looking on previously for our watershed zone map. And so you see the, the, all these properties that, that abut Andover Lake shaded in yellow, that would be zone A and they would have the most restrictive regulations put into it. Anything that's within a hundred feet of zone A, I think it is, I can't remember, it's a hundred feet of the lake or property in zone A. I think it's property in zone A is called
Property in zone A, yeah.
Zone B. And so that's in the light blue that, that surrounds all the zone A places. Zone C is more than a hundred feet away, but still within the Andover Lake District. And you see some properties that go outside the lake district that are in that zone C. And that's, I'm just going to mute while my phone stops ringing. Okay, they're done. So anyhow, so one of, somebody might be concerned that they've got, you know, property that goes way over here to Route eighty-seven. You know, why are they being impacted? Well, one, they're being impacted because their, their property is in the lake district. Some of it is, some of it isn't. And we're trying to improve the water quality, so we put it in there. That might be a tough sell with the public, I don't know. And, and I'm particularly interested in feedback from the commission on some of these outline areas. And then zone D would be properties that are in the watershed, but not in, inside the lake district. And so then, you know, another thing that, you know, struck me a little strange on the map is, is this lot right here may have a foot or two in the watershed area, but certainly primarily not. And do we wanna make exceptions for, for some of those guys? Then the last concern on the map, when we talked about this probably two years ago in the commission is when we were working on it, is when you get down past the dam in this area here, it's no longer in the watershed, it doesn't drain to the lake. So these people could say, well, I, why, why do these regulations affect me when, when we're not, we don't drain to the lake and affect the lake quality at all, which is the purpose of the regulations? So the, that map is what I'm struggling with a little bit, just making sure that it makes sense to us all.
There's, there's diff, there's different, trying to think of how I can say this. The, the classifications are, you know, adjacent to the lake. You know, a hundred feet from the properties that are adjacent to the lake. There's different classifications. Those, just because they're downstream of the watershed, doesn't, that, that just means that they're downstream from the watershed, doesn't mean that they don't fit into a classification in another way.
I understand. I'm just trying to anticipate some of the, the feedback that we're gonna get, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to take this to public hearing.
Right.
And we just need to be, you need to help me get smart so that I can answer those questions when they, when they come up at the appropriate time. But anyhow, that's, that's the map is where it stands today. And I think it's, it's overall pretty good.
It's a great map. So really, there was a lot of work put into that map.
Yep. And it shows. And I, I think it's also interesting how much of the watershed is outside of the town of Andover and we've got no control over whatsoever.
You, you, it's unbelievable how many acres that watershed really is.
Yep. So anyhow, that's, that's the map. And we've finally resurrected it and that's, that's a great step forward. That helps tell the story. Okay, so, you know, we, we talked about the two methods, stormwater runoff and the septic tanks. This talks about stormwater runoff in, in our thinking is that if you're improving your property, you spend money to improve your property, one of the improvements ought to be that we're gonna improve the quality of the water that runs off your land into the lake. If we want to make the lake get better, not be getting worse, that should be there. And that, that will cost a little bit, but that's, that's what I thought we were trying to do there. And so, again, we, we talked about zone A, B, C, and D. And in zone A, closest to the lake, we were shooting for a 10% reduction. So we'll see in the worksheet as we go through to the next page, if somebody wants to make an addition to their house or put up a shed or, or any of those kind of things and they're in zone A, we do a little calculation with the worksheet to figure out what is the phosphate nitrogen runoff going into the lake today? Then they're gonna build an addition, which is gonna make the runoff worse because it gets rid of some of our pervious land that prevents the water from soaking in by, by having it covered with the driveway, patio, rooftop, you name it. So that's gonna make it worse and that's gonna make more runoff into the lake. But we expect positive measures to be taken by the applicant, whether it's in rain garden, you know, taking the paved surface and, and making it lawn or whatever, to be 10% less than he was initially. So we expect that the water, it's gonna go into the lake after the guy does his addition, to be better than it was when he started. Similarly with zone B, a little further away, we said 7.5% reduction, zone C, 5% reduction. And then zone D, no worksheet required at all. And I said, well, if there's no worksheet required at all, why do And I said, well, if there's no worksheet required at all, why do we, why do we even make, you know, those properties part of the lake regs? And, and the reason is the next two bullets. And so even though, you know, somebody's outside of both zone A, B, C, he still must infiltrate the first two inch flush of stormwater or volume of two inch rain event from the newly increased surface area or area of increased imperviousness, like a driveway or whatever. So that's, everybody gets to do that in addition to the reduction that we're looking for. And then there's an allowance, you know, if you're, you're making some small shed or some small patio or something in your zone A, it's less than a hundred square feet. Zone B, it's 200, zone C is 300. May not require a worksheet, but you still need to mitigate that two inch rainfall runoff of the improvement, like it was talking about up above. So those are the, those are the requirements that all the verbiage is supposed to get that thought across. And it's getting pretty close. Any questions on that one? Okay, so this, this goes into the, the worksheet itself and, and we're, we're still working on that. As you can see up here, it talks about Columbia Lake, highly plagiarized after what's used over on Columbia Lake at this point. So much so that we, we got to change that to Andover. But the important thing on this chart that I wanted everybody to see are, are here are the factors that, that affect the runoff. And so you can see, you know, for a roof, the factor is 1.3, the paved surface 1.5, lawn 1.0. And then you get down here woodland and mulch bed. So that's like it's the undeveloped property 0.1. That's, that's where, you know, we want to get down into 0.1, 0.2, 0.3 things so that we make the land better. But we go through in this worksheet, you know, we would put like 2,000 square feet here, how much paved surface lawn, all these things. And this sheet calculates all this loading and then it comes down to a total estimated load here. In this case it's 0.06 and that's pounds of phosphate per acre per year. So that would be the load today. And then if you're in zone A, we expect the final product to be 10% less than that. So we would put, you know, down here, we'd fill in, okay, which 10% less than that? And, and that would be a number that we're shooting for. So that's what the first page of the worksheet is all about. You get over onto the second page and it talks about, well, what are you going to do so that you can get down to that number and meet the improvements? And you can go, you know, lawn to mulch bed, lawn to garden, paved surface to mulch bed, all these things, and it will give you an improvement. And so you put how many square feet over here you're going to do to make this improvement? And it's going to get, it'll put, you know, the reduction over here. You add all that up and it'll come out to a number and then we'll see whether or not that's been reduced, the nitrogen phosphate loading into the lake to the point where, where we meet what the regulation is.
Jed, did you work on this with John yet at all?
I, I have not. We just, John just, you found this this week, sent it out to me. I, I just put it in here to explain how it's going to work. I'm not convinced I'm smart enough to, to know the details yet, but I do understand the concepts that it's trying to, to do. And I think it all makes sense. So I think we'll get there.
Are they currently doing this on Columbia Lake?
Yes.
They are. And, and John's, John's perspective is they've been doing it for quite a few years now. And he attributes this, which one, he says, none of the property owners oppose doing because they all want a nice lake. But the lake is not getting worse, it is getting better. You know, they have not had the algae blooms over there in some time. And, and so he thinks that this will really help out and it has helped out over in Columbia. That's what he attributes his success to.
Well, that could be helpful when you were talking about trying to explain your zones A, B, C, and D, if it's already working successfully there.
It sure would. Now, we do have some people in Andover that might not want to spend their money that way, you know, because they don't get anything in their house to see for it. But I do think that we all have a vested interest in keeping our lake in good shape. And, and so, yeah, that's how.
Well, if they're concerned about spending the money, I, I don't know what the tie-in is related to what everyone in town has paid for sewers. If sewers came to pass, my understanding is it wouldn't be strictly burdened on the, the lake dwellers. That could always be it. That would also be another point you could use.
That's, that's another good point, Susan, and I will, because, yeah, this is cheap in comparison to what you're putting in sewers. So thank you. So when, when is somebody required to put in this nutrient allocation worksheet? You know, if you're building a, a new house on a piece of property, that, that is certainly who we're trying to, to get to do it. We've got some verbiage here, if you're improving more than 50% of the structure square footage within a 10-year period. We're trying to get out of, you know, you do 10% one year, 10% next year, trying to avoid triggering this. Now, we, we make that cumulative for 50%. And, and there's still a little fuzziness on what exactly improved that means. You know, if you paint all the walls, are you improving that? No. But somewhere in there, we're, we're still working on some of that. Increasing the floor area that, that goes by, by zone, the amount that you're doing that triggers that. And then the accessory structure, it varies by zone as well. And then increasing the pervious surface, like driveways, patios and all that. When you're doing that, you have to use worksheet. And that's, that's what I think, you know, best describes that, our, our plan to reduce the amount of nitrogen and phosphate that runs off our land into, into the lake. It would be nice if we could just say, don't use fertilizer, but I don't think we can go that route. That's, that's not going to work. So that's the stormwater runoff piece. The next one is septic system mitigation. And I've been pleased to see, there's been an awful lot of new septic tanks going in around the lake. I think that's great. But we do have a lot of small lots in, in old septic systems. And so there's probably more that need to be fixed. And, and I don't have the, the best understanding of why it is that, you know, somebody, when, when we do sampling and we know that a septic system's failed, we can't go back to that person and tell them to, to fix it. But that's not our jurisdiction, you know, that's the Eastern Highland Health District and, and so we can't go do that. What we can do is when somebody's going to build a new house or significant renovation on a house, we can, we can tell them to upgrade the septic system to, to meet today's standards. I guess we've also got, you know, the existing septic systems located near the lake are in the water table. And these new regulations would apply to zone A and zone B, which are closest to the lake.
In this regulation, there also is a, a regulation concerning distance to groundwater now, which wasn't in there before.
Yes. And, and so, let me see. So anyhow, the conditions requiring a new septic system. Yeah, I'm not going to read them all to you here, but if you add a bedroom, you make your, your dwelling bigger, those kinds of things, that's going to make, and make you have a new septic system unless you can prove that yours is okay. Maybe you put in a new septic system last year. And so here would be the criteria for exemption. And Scott was saying, if, if you can show that your system is greater than 12 inches above the max high water table, okay, that's, that's good. If you're greater than 35 feet to the high water mark of Andover Lake or a tributary, which is one of the brooks running into it, you wouldn't have to do that. Or it exceeds 50% of the size requirements for a new septic for a principal building. I'm still struggling with this one a little bit. It seems to me that, that we should expect 100% of the septic system. But more to do on that. That's what our regulation specifies now. And, and there's people that are trying to convince me that that's the correct wording on that.
I'd like to be in that conversation too, Jed.
You'll get your chance, okay? Yep. So what's left to do, you know, there's a, there's a, I want to make sure that the map is the way we want it. There's some finishing touches on the worksheet. I'd like to do a test run, you know, when, at the inland wetlands meeting last week, a house with a, a small lot wanted to put a 20 by 20 shed on the property. And, and these regulations would have been ideal as we were trying to, to talk the guy into doing some things that would improve the water quality because he's diminishing it. The regulations would give us that. I'm just not sure with this small lot, that there's enough things that you can do to meet the regulations. So we need to do a couple of test runs with it. And, and that lot we talked about last week with the wetlands folks, I think is a good one to go do that on. The, we had the question of, you know, there's a couple of lots that are not developed now that are completely wooded. You can't go in and develop on those lots and make it any better than it is today. It's as good as it gets.
We struggled with that, that concept, the whole thing.
Yep. And, and we're not done struggling with it yet. I'm not, I think we're close, but we just need to make sure that that works. And maybe, you know, there's not an awful lot of undeveloped lots anymore. We can run a couple of test cases on, on the, the couple remaining lots and, and see how that works out. But I need to be able to explain that and I can't today. So I, I got to get better on that.
And you got to change the placement of the L, Jed, in regulations.
Yep, okay. Yeah, I see that it was, I, I added this five minutes before we came onto the meeting tonight and didn't get a chance to prove that very well. I think we need to know what, what's left out there. The, I was concerned about making sure that we had ways to trigger the use of the worksheet. You know, it wasn't clear if somebody's going to go pave their driveway that, that anybody here in the town gets a vote. I don't know. And so I want to make sure that whether it's the wetlands, the zoning agent, planning zoning commission, the zoning board of appeals, all those people who, who have a say in allowing somebody to reduce the permeable space on their lot, that, that they have the mechanism to trigger it over to zoning so that we can get them into the zoning record and do that. And then there's some minor corrections to the regulations. And, and that's, that's almost prophetic, the way that the minor corrections are the typos, just like there is in that word regulation there. So that's what's left to do. What's driving me to, to have the discussion with this commission tonight was again, starting at the end, you know, I was going to brief Alpoa and Alma at the semi-annual meeting with the public on October 14th. And there were a bunch of steps that needed to happen before we got there. And that's with the, the Alma board and the Alpoa president on 7 October. And so Jim, you will be getting, I'm going to send out, I talked to Linda this afternoon on, on that. She's in charge of Alma, Linda Derrick. And I'll get her a list of, of names from you and me and Megan and Joe. And then she'll get the Alma board and the, the Alpoa president. And there's a couple other people that Heather that's working with, I forget what group she's working with, that is trying to do a lot on, on the lake quality as well. But then I'll be briefing the wetlands commission on, on the 5th of October. So all that, that's going there. And, and we as a commission will, will look in detail at the wording, the map and the worksheet and explain that to you. I just wanted to run by you guys tonight, the, the concept that I'm trying to get out to the public so they know what it is we're trying to do and maybe they can embrace us so that once we finally get to a public hearing, all those different organizations are standing tall with us, saying that they support to this being the right thing to do. So that was, that was what I wanted to go through on, on the lake regs tonight. For, for those that have been on the commission for a long time, that probably not, not a lot knew there. That's just telling you where we were. Now, we are close to the finish line. We, we're, we're working hard on that now and that's one of the goals for the upcoming year. But there's first step, you know, technically wise is to get it so that the commission's happy with it. And then, then we'll take it in final form to a public hearing where I expect all these other players to come in and support us there. Any other questions before we wrap?
When we finished that up and stopped working on it, Jed, the, the only thing left was the allocation worksheet.
It, I agree with you, Scott. However, I was not in a position that I could answer. You know, somebody could ask me a question, I have to get it so that I understand. There's very little need to be changed in the verbiage. But I need to understand how the worksheet works better in, in a couple of things. So I, I think we are very close on the regs. It was just getting myself up to speed so that I can brief you guys on a final product once we get it there. And I want to give you a product that I think is, is ready to go and then let you guys take a whack at me and see how I do.
Jed, I have a question. I have, for some reason, some of my screens are going in and out. And I, I saw, I have something a little while ago that I can't bring up now about percentages. And I'm not sure what it had to do with, if it was a percentage of something or a percentage of how far away you actually are from the lake. If somebody is further and further away from the lake, is this graduated as far as what they're asked to do?
Yes. And so the, the lots that are right on the lake, we're looking for a 10% reduction.
Okay, that's what I probably had up.
Yeah. And so in those lots that are the next ring around, that are close to the lake, but not on the lake, would be 7.5. And those lots that are further away, but still in the lake district would be a 5% reduction.
Okay, that sounds like what I had up and, and don't have anymore.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, I appreciate the opportunity to practice my spiel with all of you. And there'll be more to follow on this, but, but I do think this is a worthwhile project for us and need to get that wrapped up. So that's that one. Old Business 5C Amendment to Planning and Zoning Commission Bylaws, I'm going to pass on tonight. I, I've still got a little bit of work to do based on Lee Ann's comments to me to, to be in a position. We're close, but I knew that by the time we covered all the things we were going to cover tonight, I didn't want to be here like, I saw the Board of Selectmen meeting went on till almost midnight the other day. Nope, that's, I like that thing we have in our bylaws that says we will be done by 10:30. And even then we should be better than that. Okay, so I think that's all the old business. Finishing up the new, new business, sign regulations. I got some words on, on there and I'm not even going to show them here. Let, so somebody approached Eric Anderson a couple of weeks back and said, you are violating my constitutional rights by not allowing me to put my political sign up now. And so we, we ran that by our, our lawyer, Mark Brants. And I know the town lawyers take a look at it too. And, and the feedback was, yes, while our regulations are very clear on when you can put up a political sign, that, that isn't the way that those things are viewed now. And, and so essentially, a sign is a sign. If we, we can have whatever rules we want to apply to signs, but it's going to apply to all the signs. And I think we can deviate between temporary signs and permanent signs and make those rules a little bit different. But we can't regulate the content of what's on a sign. So after we get done with the lake regs, we'll probably take, I got, I have a copy of, you know, what was presented to me as a newly updated town sign regs. And I'll study through those a little bit before I send them out to you folks. But that's, that'll be one of our things to do. Although I did not put that as a goal to be done next year. We'll see, reality sometimes gets in the way. And we did meet with the head of the Andover Democratic Party and Andover Republican Party and went through what we crafted as the, the most lenient, if you will, ruling on signs for private yards. And we said, okay, this is, you know, if, if this kind of sign can be 32 square feet, then, then your political sign can be that too. And, and so we gave them some guidance there. And then I see that at the Board of Selectmen meeting recently, we talked about putting political signs or signs in general on, on town property in, in the right of way. And everybody has a little bit of town right of way in front of their house out by the road. So those little signs that you see along the road are all really on town property. But, but the Board of Selectmen agreed that, one, we can put signs on town property, but it can't be any bigger than, I think it was four square feet went out on there, two by two.
Jed, could you repeat that about how close you can be on town, town property or not?
So you can, you can be, you can put a sign up on town property. It can't be any more than four square feet in size. In town property, you know, for purposes of this discussion, we define as along 15 feet along the road. You know, 15 feet, within 15 feet of the road.
Okay. So I think we're talking about two different things here. And one is the content of your sign. And the other one is how soon you can put it up.
Okay.
We may be talking about three or four things, but that's what I'm getting out of this so far.
I think they changed the regulation about when you can put the signs, political signs up.
But Scott, they're not supposed to change the regulations without us. I mean, this is a regulation that we have. The Board of Selectmen or concerned citizens, in my opinion, were not supposed to just do this. And we weren't even emailed about it.
The state, the state did it.
Well, no one's mentioned that so far.
Right, well, it's a state thing that happened.
So this came from the state, not from?
It came, it came from the court, actually, I think.
Yes, it, it was the courts. I don't know the specific, specific case study that, that referred to. But as it presented, as it was presented to us by our attorney, if we enforced our regulations, we would be sued, we could be sued, and we would lose. And, and that was not something that Eric or I were excited about. And so we did meet with these people and we, we pulled the pertinent issues out of our regulations in existence. And, and you should have those up on your screen now to take a look at the rules we put for signs on private property. And these all came out of our regulations. And I agree that maybe I should have done a better job of informing you people immediately that we were doing something different. But I'm not sure I understand it well enough to do that even now.
The, the state, the state came down with this from the courts. And then the attorneys drafted all these new regulations.
Okay, well, that's where?
The town attorneys.
I think somebody should have brought us up to speed. I know there's a lot more going on in the world now. But, you know, I, driving around, this rule has been in place in our regulations for years. And I wondered why both parties, both major parties were what I considered to be flaunting it. Um, so I, I just think it would have been a courtesy if, like I said, you know, we have a lot more to worry about than this right now. But it is a common thing. And I'm getting a little confused about what we're talking about. We're talking about distance from the road and content and how long you can leave a sign up and this and that. And I just, you know, would, I think we, we as a commission, I just feel would, would like to have been in the loop.
I apologize for that, Lee Ann. I should have done that. And I wasn't sure anybody would notice that between, you know, the time that we put this out, which is maybe a week or two ago, and, and the time that we were having the next meeting where I could do that. What I, what I was concerned about and, and still concerned about is the, the proliferation of signs that, which is what you said, Lee Ann. The, you know, there are, between the, we love our first responders
Yep.
to Black Lives Matter.
Yep.
Lots of signs, and all those signs are out on the town property primarily. And, and so I'm not sure that our regulations apply to the signs on town property. I gotta go study that some more. But our regulations did talk about 90, we could, it was 30 days for a, a political sign. It could be expanded to 90 days. My thought was that we probably, I didn't want to go around and start pulling out all the signs or telling Jim to go around and start pulling out all the signs. But we've got to figure out what to do with the signs. And so I thought we would get through political season, see where the abuses were. And that would allow us to, to have a better understanding of what safeguards or restrictions to put into our regulations so that we get more of what we want coming out the other end.
Yeah, and as I said, it's, you know, we, we as a whole have, you know, a lot of things to worry about now. And this is not that important. But on the other hand, I can see where, you know, like you just said, there's, and I, I, you know, there's, signs are kind of heartwarming about we're all in this together and thank you first responders. And I don't think anybody wants to be, least of all me, wants to go around telling people that they have to take them down. I'm just concerned about the, like you said, the proliferation, proliferation of it.
Yep.
If it even happens. And, and probably it's not going to be that bad.
But, so the takeaway is whatever rules we apply to those we love our first responders signs
Yep, yep.
are going to be the rules that we need to apply to the political signs as well. And so that's going to take a little bit of work because I think those are all temporary signs and we can make it consistent. But when we do put out a new regulation, and once again, I think we're going to be bound to enforce it. And, and I'm not ready to, to be the bad guy and go pull down all those we love our first responder signs at this point. Getting close, but not there yet.
No, I, I totally understand.
So that was, that was what I wanted to, to brief you folks all on signs. And, and so at some point next year, we probably will tackle that. And we'll go, go from there.
Okay.
Okay, that's it on signs. I'm going to skip over 8C. We'll get to the minutes in just a minute. In paragraph eight, item seven on the agenda is discussion. Is anybody got anything else they would like to, to discuss at this point?
I have a question. Has Linda resigned? I thought I saw that on the Board of Selectmen agenda.
Thank you for bringing that up. And, and I feel bad that Linda was not here tonight so that we could thank her. She did resign and, and I knew that was coming. And as a matter of fact, one of the people that, that was on, and I don't see, maybe if I stop sharing. Is Mindy still here? Oh, I couldn't, there, now I can see your smiling face. Okay, so Mindy Goslin is, is going to be taking over for Linda as the board clerk.
Okay.
And so, yes, Linda did resign.
Hi, Mindy. Hello.
And this was going to be Linda's last meeting with us tonight. And she has certainly done a superb job of being the board clerk. And so Mindy's got some big shoes to fill and I'm sure she can do that. And I'm just, we're excited to have you here, Mindy. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm, I'm excited to be here.
So that, that takes care of that part of the discussion. And Amanda's hoping that, Mindy, you get real smart on the Zoom sharing thing so I don't drag her to all these meetings to put up all that stuff. And I'm sure you'll be able to handle that too.
Yep.
Any other discussion topics?
Well, is there anything else ever going to happen on the Hendy Road property? Or is that out of our jurisdiction now?
Jim, I'll let you answer that. I am under the impression that is out of our jurisdiction at the moment.
We're talking 57 Hendy Road?
Yeah.
That's the one with the lack of frontage out there.
Yeah, there's a number of issues. I don't see it coming to the commission, but I don't know that for a fact. I'm trying to work through, there's some confusion. The flood regu, in the flood zone regulations, they cast a net on the whole 100-year flood, any property within the 100-year flood zone set by FEMA. But it's the flood zone reg. Flood zone is, is much smaller than, not include, includes very little property. And we reached out to Mark Brants and he said, oh yeah, you're, he, there would be no, I mean, there's not, residential construction is not permitted in 100-year flood. There's an inconsistency in our reg, inconsistency in our regulation. I'm trying to work through that. That's, that's about it.
What about the lot line? What about the frontage on the town road?
Well, I did reach out to Mark Brants on that as well. And he said, he basically said it's up to the, to the owner to come up with that. But when you look at that, you look at that plan, it may not be clear, but they own prop, they all have the frontage on the other side of the, other side of the house. It, it may not be clear because, because there, there's a, at least one of the plans submitted to me is, is what looked like a lot line, which is really a proposed lot line. So right now, the lot that we're talking about, the lot that surrounds that house has ample frontage to the, it's the river. So it's not like they can't provide the frontage.
They can't, they can't provide frontage on the town road.
What I'm saying is that, that lot has considerable, has a lot width on the other side of the house. That, that lot, it's a horseshoe lot around, around the house. They actually have the lot with it and, and there's where you establish building line, which becomes very confusing.
They, they don't, they don't have anything. They have, they have frontage on a town property on, on both sides. John Valenti gave them the frontage on the town's property when he should have been giving it, telling them that they had to have frontage on Hendy Road. But instead he made it to town property and that's wrong. And so if you, if you let them do it on the other side, they're going to be having frontage on the town property again and not, and not on an actual town road.
That's, that's an argument that, I, it's an argument that was forward by, by the owner and I disagreed with. I said it was just a mistake.
So, so to add insert, salt to injury, we would do it twice, allowing it twice? They wouldn't have two lots there. They need it, they need 400 feet on the frontage there or something close somehow. And they didn't, they just, they still don't have it on the, the house that's sitting there. It's not a horseshoe lot, Jim. Those, those lots were, they're, were hooked together. They came from one lot and the other ones came from another lot. Now you're calling it a horseshoe lot. It's not, not what you're saying. It's a, it's, they're looking for frontage on town's property, which is incorrect. If they buy that property and they have the 400 feet, which they won't because I already looked at it, they still don't have the 400 feet.
I mean, part, part of that is a lot that, the, the existing house, the old, is it Parkington's house?
Yeah, yeah.
So that was carved out. Whenever, I, I don't know when.
The, the Parkington's owned 1,000 feet of frontage on the road.
Okay, so, Amanda, if we, if we go to our website, on a pending application is, is the 57 Hendy Road. And we can call up the pitcher because Jim and Scott are both talking to different things.
I'll pull it up.
What I'm saying is property on the left side of the house is part of, is contiguous. I mean, it's part, part of a lot with the land to the right of the house.
Okay, so we need to be clear on the house, the existing house that Jim is talking about is the one that's right in the center of the screen.
That's not the existing house. The existing house is opposite Pine Ridge Drive and to the right a little bit back there.
That's a different existing house. And that's where the confusion is. The, the, the existing house off of Pine Ridge Drive is the one that Jim agrees with you that was improperly allowed and does not have sufficient frontage.
Right.
But that was, that was authorized by our zoning agent.
Right.
And we can't do anything about that now.
No, keep in mind that that, that wasn't built on. I mean, that was built, had been built years ago.
Right, probably in the 20s or something.
It was the, the lot was, was carved out more recent.
Right, okay, so the proposed lot has 46, 46 feet on Hendy Road.
And if you go? Here's what I'm saying.
Existence in the center, you get several hundred feet of frontage on the east side of that lot.
Yeah, but that's on town property. It's not on town road.
What difference does it make? The road used to go there, they had the French on the road. The road used to go there, they had the French on the road.
Well, I mean, on the east side, it's pretty much the way it is everywhere around town. At least, at least, for the most part. Where it gets weird is on the right, where the road was apparently relocated, but I agree, I mean, that's town property. Doesn't have frontage, well, we use, I mean, we use the term lot width, and it's measured, you know, building setback, or in front of the building setback line.
But that lot is a U that goes around the existing house that's in the center of the drawing. It has the frontage on the left-hand side, that more than meets the requirement, as long as that's one lot.
What, what doesn't exist right now, and, and read the plan, because it's off of my screen, but there's a line, in the, the stonehouse, it says existing house, that's the stonehouse. Which the rear, at the rear of that lot, there's a line, a property line, which doesn't exist. It's proposed, but, I don't know, it's, it's. But it's, that proposed to create a new lot, which is, it's proposed that the land to the, to the east of the house be now part of the house lot, which is, is not depicted on the plan by, by any means.
So I think, you want to say at this part, is there's no satisfactory solution proposed by the applicant. Is that fair, Jim?
I hung up on whether it's a permitted, permitted or the, I love the opinion, I'm told it's not a permitted lot. It's not a special permit or a permitted. Hence, it's a prohibited use, residential.
So they have not come to you with an acceptable plan that would make it work?
No. I'm trying to deal with, with the use, arguing the use, and I haven't resolved that completely. I mean, I did, I did tell them that it was an allowable use.
What's not an allowable usage?
Hey, it's, well, here's where it gets confusing, in the, in the flood zone regulations, they list permitted and special, permitted and special permit uses, they tend to be like agriculture, farming, recreation. Residential use is not listed as, as either a permitted or special permit use.
In the flood zone?
Right. But then you have to, then there's the discrepancy in the definition of, of what that flood zone covers, that's, that's where I'm stuck.
So I think the takeaway is that there's no reason for it to come to the commission at this point. But I don't see where they presented to Jim a path forward that complies with our regulations, that allows them to do anything on it. Because they do have the frontage issue, and the floodplain issue.
Actually, redraw the lot line and make a, ask for a rear lot.
Okay.
But that, that, that's if, if they resolve, either get a variance, or somehow convince me that, that it is allowable use, whether it be, it's a right or special permit. So we have two, two big issues here. The rear lot would, if what, if they did pursue that, and they're not inclined to, it would make for a special. And that would, that would be a way around the whole frontage issue. Not around it, but it would be a way to align with it.
And would, you also think of special permits for a rear lot?
Right. It would be, it would be a reconfiguration of that lot. So then, it would trigger the special permit.
Okay.
Is it still in the floodplain, though, Jim?
What's that, Susan?
So we don't have to worry about it for a while.
We don't have to worry about it for a while, yep.
Okay.
You're still out there stirring the pot, trying to see where that's at.
Okay.
Any other discussion topics? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. And first up is our last regular meeting from August 17th, 2020. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from August 17th.
I move we approve.
Dropped out, Susan, where I couldn't hear you. Would you say again your motion? Susan, can you hear me?
No, I can't, no, I can't, I'm having trouble with the internet tonight.
Okay. I, I heard you say you would make a motion.
To approve the minutes of our regular meeting of August 17th, 2020.
Thank you, Susan, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, and, any discussion on those minutes? I had no comments on the minutes. Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll take, take a vote. And Anne? Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The minutes are approved, 500. Next up are the special meeting sidewalk minutes from August 20th, 2020. Like a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the sidewalk, which is our special meeting on August 20th, 2020.
Thank you, Susan. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, I had one minor change, in the minutes, we talked about the real estate agent leaving at 8:40, I believe he left at 9:40.
I believe you're right.
That's my only comment.
Okay, Amanda, will you be able to correct that, or, since, since I wrote those minutes?
Yes, so the real estate agent left at 9:40?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, okay, thank you, any other discussion on those minutes? I was gonna say the guy who wrote those up did a Cracker Jack job.
Yes, he did.
Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Leanne?
Abstaining.
And I vote aye as well, the minutes are approved, 401, with Leanne abstaining. Moving on to the next section. Nine correspondence, I did get a letter from Eric Anderson today, asking for an 824 referral on a couple of pieces of property that the town has been offered by a landowner and a land trust. I just wanted to call your attention to that, I will send you out the information that I got on it. There's a fabulous write-up, I don't know who did the write-up on, on why we should get it from the Conservation Commission, but they, they did a very nice job, and so I'll send that out to you tomorrow, and we'll discuss that at the, at our next meeting. And that was all that I wanted to do, is call your attention to that.
What is this, is this a donation?
It is a donation.
Okay.
So it makes it pretty easy.
Piece of property up by the dump.
Okay, so this is for the next meeting?
Yes. Moving on to item 10, Administrator Reports, Jim, you have anything for us?
I did meet with the owner's rep of the gravel pit at 517 Route 6. And I was a little concerned, because I was dealing with, gentleman that I was dealing with is no longer in state, and the site representative is an employee, as opposed to one of the two brothers, so it's an applicant. So it's a little more distant, so I met with the engineer, went over status, and they have to start some restorations at this point in time. Project was approved in five phases, they're gonna have to just restore a number of phases before they move forward. And I'm waiting for a restoration plan for that.
What's involved with the restoration plan?
It's great conceding, I believe. It's, it's cut the slopes, I'm gonna have to check the plan, I really haven't into that as of yet, I hope to be doing that this week. Also, do anticipate, gentleman that's from, from Old Farms and Pine Ridge Drive, lot that is accessed from both of those streets, is moving forward with a wetlands applicant. Or the, I think it's on a commission, subdivision at some point. Yep, it what?
This is Leanne, could you repeat your remarks about, is it the extra mark, that's what you were talking about? Did you say you had a concern because the owner's representative is different?
Right, no longer, the, the Genovese Brothers, which I've been dealing with, neither one is on-site, and I just wanted to so I sort of facilitated a meeting with their engineer.
Does not, does not on-site mean like temporarily, or you think they're kind of vacated, or is that not clear? Or they're just not gonna be the representative?
No, one of the brothers, I mean, they've always run it out of the gravel operation, out of the auto parts. And neither of the brothers is currently managing those. I'm not sure what will happen in the future.
So who's managing, who's managing that now?
It's, it's whoever is running the the auto parts store, the auto parts place, employee of, and who run it. But I'm gonna get a name, I'm gonna get a contact, so I do have an onsite contact there.
Kind of a big deal. People that took the application now aren't around anymore?
Well, they're, they're offsite, yeah. One of them's in Florida, it may be temporary, it may not, I don't know. And one of them, I believe, works in Connecticut, I forget where, but.
So, did you say that, go ahead.
No longer on a day-to-day basis.
So is the last person that you met with, you said it's, it's the person who's managing the end of auto parts, or it's the, the engineer of?
That is your Chris Bell, engineer of record.
So that's who you've been meeting with, not the person who's managing end of auto parts, or is it the same person?
I'm sorry, the last time I met, I met with Chris Bell and one of the, Bill Genovese, who came from another location.
Okay. So the last time you met, is it correct that you just met with Chris Bell?
No, I met with Chris Bell and Bill Genovese.
Okay, so it's your understanding that from now on, Bill Genovese, Genovese is for, at least temporarily, is not gonna be there?
Well, I'm just saying he's not there on a day-to-day basis, that's all.
Okay. And, and just to go back for a second, is there a different person than either one of these two people actually managing the place?
Well, there's a gentleman that works in the, in the auto parts place that handles some, some routine business for them, yes.
Okay, that's the person whose name you're, you don't have yet.
Who was the applicant, Bill Genovese?
Is, yeah, one of the Genovese, yeah. I, I forget whether it was under.
I think it was Bill.
Okay, Bill and Joe, I've dealt more with Joe, because he was on-site. He was, he was working in the annual over recently.
So what would be the normal process with that, with you having the applicant not meeting, not being able to meet with you?
Well, they, they did, I mean, they Bill did make himself available. I mean, I kind of, I was trying to actually put it together, to meet with the wetlands agent and her, her pathologist, Nick. He wasn't able to do it as fast as I would have liked, so I ended up meeting alone, and I'm just gonna bring them into the loop, so. I just thought it was important, given the fact that I was, became concerned that I, I lost to cut my contact person, I wanted to reestablish with those two individuals.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Jim, or anything else for Jim? Okay, the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission liaison, the is the only thing that I'd like to share at this point, is that the drawing on 57 Hendy Road that you are looking at was approved by the Inland Wetlands Commission for for what they want to do, to build the house there in the floodplain, within the 200 feet of the, of the river, and that sort of thing, so that is through wetlands, and is, is headed over to zoning, or planning zoning, whatever the case turns out to be there.
So, so their regulations permit building in the floodplain, apparently?
Yes.
Don't speak to a floodplain.
Basically, what they're doing is bringing in Phil and raising the level. Bring that, that house site out of, above the 100-year flood level. It doesn't change the flood zone, though. Doesn't change the fact that it's in the 100-year flood zone. Assume there's a way to change it now. Hasn't happened. Hasn't happened.
Okay, I'm moving on to public speak. I can't imagine anybody from the public still with us. So with that, we'll move on to adjournment. And before we adjourn, again, I want to welcome Mindy to be the new board clerk. I thank Linda in her absence for all the great work that she's done for us. And I thank Amanda for helping us out tonight, in all the times that she has in the past. And I appreciate all of you bearing with us. We went a little longer than I hoped, but we're well prior to the, the bylaws cutoff of 10:30, so. We're hanging in there. Somebody want to move that we adjourn?
This is Leeann. I'll move to adjourn at 9:54.
Thank you, Leeann. Any second.
One second.
Thank you, Ann. No discussion, we'll vote, Ann?
Aye.
Scott? I guess he adjourned early. We'll call that an abstention. Susan?
Aye.
Leeann?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, we're 4, 0, 1. Scott, person abstaining. Thank you very much, everybody. Had a lot going on. We'll see you next month.
Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, Amanda.
Good night.
Good night. Oh, there's Scott. He's back, okay.